And that means begin.
Thirty seconds now.
Okay.
Okay, we are live.
Okay, everyone, welcome to the council meeting, March 1st. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Councilmember Tovar to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. All right, and tonight's invocation will be led by Malcolm McPhail.
Thank you. Was reading through one of the proverbs today, and it says that the understanding of knowledge and the learning of knowledge, it says, "Understanding will attain wise counsel." And so my thought for the night would be that wise counsel would continually prevail in the deliberations of a city council for the benefit of the city, for the safety of the city, and for the prosperity of the city. And I pray that that's going to be results of the many decisions that you wrestle through and struggle through at times. And so with that, let me offer a word of prayer, if we can bow our heads, please. Lord, we do pray and bow our heads and ask for understanding and wisdom through wise counsel, that each of our council members, our mayor, our other civic leaders that are present in this meeting tonight, would attain wise counsel and then walk in the understanding of that counsel, and that it would be for the best of our city and of our community. I'm always reminded to pray for our first responders, and that you would keep them safe and watch over our community and keep our community safe and in peace. We ask those things in your name, amen.
Amen, thank you.
Thank you, and God bless you.
All right, city clerks report on posting the agenda.
Today's agenda was posted on February 24th, 2021, at 1:45 PM.
Thank you, and roll call.
Rebecca Armendariz here. Dion Bracco.
Here.
Zach Hilton.
Here.
Pedro La Romanos.
Present.
Carol Marks here. Fred Tovar.
Here.
Marie Blankley.
Here. Okay, orders of the day. Seeing none, all council members are participating remotely pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number N-2920 in order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus. The meeting is being livestreamed from the city website, cityofgillroy.org, and is viewable on cable channel 17 and on Facebook Live. Public comments can be made during the meeting by watching the meeting online and calling 669-900-6833, or logging into Zoom at https://rb.gy/mofg2i and enter passcode 470147. When I call the item you wish to speak on, press star nine on your telephone keypad or use the raise your hand icon. All right, employee introductions. None ceremonial items. We have a proclamation naming the month of March, Red Cross Month. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in Gilroy across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas during the trying times of the coronavirus pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it was responding to this year's record-breaking disasters across the country or rolling up their sleeves to give blood when our country faced a severe blood shortage. And whereas here in Gilroy, local families have relied on American Red Cross volunteers for comfort and hope while coping with disaster. Volunteers also help people affected by home fires by addressing their urgent needs like food, lodging, and recovery support. And whereas American Red Cross volunteers have supported local families in other ways too, it collects nearly 40% of the nation's blood supply, provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans and their families, teaches millions life-saving skills such as lifeguarding and CPR, and through its Restoring Family Links program, connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. And whereas this life-saving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience, nearly 200 years since the birth of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance her noble legacy, and we ask others to join in their commitment to care for people in need. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as American Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens of Gilroy to support this outstanding organization and its noble humanitarian mission. I believe we have someone here to accept. It's not really an award, a proclamation, but is someone here who wants to say a couple of words?
I have Camille McCormack here.
Yes, am I on?
Yes, you are, Camille.
Oh, good, no, thank you, Ms. Mayor and the city council in the city of Gilroy. And I, as mentioned last year, we were chartered August 21st, 1917 by Woodrow Wilson. So we have quite a wonderful history in Gilroy of supporting such a noble organization and a noble cause, and I am most grateful. And I do represent my family, my, I don't know if you see my picture, my mother in the back. I'm receiving my 60-year pin this year, but thank you to my mother and all the great people in Gilroy that made the Red Cross and make the Red Cross effort so viable here. My greatest appreciation, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for all you do. All right, next item is recognizing Corporal Robert Basuino, Detective Eric Cryer, and Detective Hugo Del Maral as recipients of the State of California Governor's Public Safety Officer Medal of Valor for an act of heroism demonstrated at the Gilroy Garlic Festival on July 28, 2019. Captain Juan Roca, are you here to add some words?
Good evening, Mayor, I am, and good evening, council members. So the Governor's Public Safety Medal of Valor is actually the highest state award for valor that is awarded to law enforcement officers in the state of California. In July of 2020, we submitted nominations for officers prior demo around with Sueno for their brave and heroic actions during the 2019 garlic festival incident. We, as an organization, we strongly believe that their actions not only met, but exceeded the qualifying criteria for the Medal of Valor. Our three GORPD officers were three of only eight public safety officers in the state of California that were awarded the Public Safety Medal of Valor. This past January 25th, Governor Gavin Newsom and Attorney General Xavier Becerra presented the Medal of Valor to officers prior demo round with Sueno via a virtual awards ceremony. So with that, that concludes my quick brief, I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Are either of the officers here?
I don't believe they are here today. I don't know if you have anything further than that. Yeah, I don't believe they're here.
It's fine, that's fine, we are so grateful for all three of them and very well-deserved awards, thank you. Okay, presentations to the council. This is for public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Suzanne, do we have any public comments?
If you would like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco.
That's the end of the report.
All right, councilmember Armendariz.
Sure, um, let's see, I have the A-BAG meeting, the Association of Bay Area Governments Housing Element. They're having a training, a policy training workshop coming up on March 9th. The Caltrain Policy Group met as well as held a, oh, I'm sorry, VTA, VTA held a meeting about possible housing development in Gilroy that had it in Spanish this week and last week, and in English last week. And that was really well-attended by members of the community and people from South County, as well as our mayor and council member Hilton and Marks. I believe if I missed anybody else who was there, I apologize. There was no street naming committee meeting or any of the others except historic heritage and, let's see. I also wanted to talk just quickly about the high school, the Gilroy High School mass vaccination site has opened up and appointments are now available for anyone who is in the next category of eligibility, which includes food service workers, agricultural workers, let's see, childcare providers, childcare workers, anyone who works with children, and of course, our 65 and older, so.
You all can call now or register for an appointment online, thank you.
All right, thank you, councilmember Marks.
I guess, this last Thursday, the homeless ad hoc committee met with the Salvation Army, Compassion Center, and St. Joseph's. After listening to what all three agencies do to help the homeless situation, we as an ad hoc committee are beginning to see a light at the end of the tunnel. And we plan on going ahead and doing some future brainstorming. We're going to be hearing from Rebecca Garcia in two weeks and possibly the Youth Alliance. And so hopefully, we will begin to have some information to present to the council sometime at the end of March or maybe the beginning of April. On another note, I met with Tim Davis today from the Compassion Center, and we discussed safe parking. But I would like to share what I learned with the ad hoc committee first so that we, you know, all together as a group would present the information to council. Um, I feel the public needs to understand and remember that Gilroy, the city of Gilroy, has no jurisdiction over the state, county, or water district property. Our city administrator, though, has been very successful in getting these agencies involved to clean up their properties over the past few weeks. However, to keep our city looking nice, these cleanups have to happen regularly. This is where the public can help out by lobbying our state representatives, county district supervisor and water district, and demanding that more attention be given to their properties. The city of Gilroy is very good at maintaining their city property. However, we need help from those other agencies to do the same. The silent majority needs to stop being silent, we cannot solve the garbage issue alone, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mary Blankley, from Visit Gilroy California Welcome Center. Maddie Scariot from the Poppy Jasper International Film Festival made a presentation to the board to share the details of the upcoming virtual event scheduled April 7 through 20. Board members received the January 2021 Smith Travel Report, which detailed the occupancy, average daily rate, and revenue per available room for the lodging properties here in Gilroy. The City of Gilroy Lodging Report for Quarter Ending 12/31/20 was shared with the board as well. Board members unanimously elected David McLaughlin, who's the general manager of Hilton Garden Inn to the, as the new Vice Chair of the Visit Gilroy Board of Directors, following the resignation of Eric Gethard, who's the general manager of the Hampton Inn, which was received and accepted by the Board of Directors. And I want to give a heads up to my council colleagues, staff, and the public that I'll be introducing a safe storage for firearms ordinance with the goal of reducing gun violence and improving gun safety for everyone under the future council-initiated agenda items at our March 15th meeting, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember, councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't repeat anything regarding the homeless ad hoc committee. Thank you, councilmember Marks, for that report. I also just want to sort of add a little bit to that where I know several of us are meeting with community members and other agencies, just to sort of get some, as much feedback, brainstorming ideas. And I want to thank those community members that I've met with or spoken to in regards to their thoughts on the homeless issue and how we as a city can do better, but also how we as a community can work together. And I appreciate the work that the committee is doing, I also appreciate the work that these local agencies are doing. And yes, we do have a lot of work to do. But I think, you know, as mentioned earlier and several times, you know, the more people we have at the table sort of contributing and helping is only going to help us get to that end goal of what we're trying to reach. So again, I just want to thank the committee members, the agencies that we've met with, and the community members that I've met with as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember La Romanos.
Thank you, just one brief item, the Mobility Partnership will be meeting this Wednesday to discuss future changes to the Highway 25 interchange as well as changes to 152 and 156, and, excuse me, just 156. And please note that these are changes, these are very long-term, we're talking five, 10-year changes, but we are meeting regionally with our representatives from San Benito County and Santa Clara County, and we're planning for that, that's Wednesday morning at 9 o'clock.
Thank you, and yes, I'll piggyback on that because I too am on that committee with councilmember La Romanos. And we are hopefully going to start seeing a little more action though with the 25 interchange. It's been a long time coming, but that part of it is hopefully going to be getting underway soon. As for the Gilroy Economic Development Partnership, we had a meeting on February 24th, and that was for that, the group, that's the group of Visit Gilroy and the Chamber of Commerce and the downtown and Gilroy Gardens, and two councilmembers, myself and councilmember Hilton. And that's the one that's supporting the three initiatives. And right now, we've got these two proposals for the property out at Gilroy Gardens. And so I'd like the public to know that this stage is for council to decide if we want to move, if we want to use one of the two. So it is not until there's a decision to actually go with one that there's anything for the public to want to even comment on because until we go with one of those two, nothing, nothing is happening. When we decide which of those two, if one is what we go forward, that's when we get public comment involved, and that's when the whole thing, right now, everything is very, very general. Those proposals are both available to the public, you can see just how general, one is far more general than the other. But that's where, that's where those things stand, so keep, stay tuned because that discussion is coming up. But it's premature to get into any specifics. Vaccines, as councilmember Armendariz said, yes, the Gilroy High School did open. I want to caution everyone though that if you're trying to make appointments and you find yourself unable, the vaccine is still in short supply. And that, that is an issue for everywhere in the county, and it's certainly affecting the ability to distribute the quantities that the county was hoping at Gilroy High School. Farm workers, however, the county's mobile vaccination unit is going out this Thursday and Friday to Christopher Ranch. So those, that's, that's getting handled. All right, that is my report. And next item on the agenda is item five, future council-initiated agenda items. I see a hand, councilmember Tovar. You're on mute, oh, there you go.
Mayor, a couple of things. First, and it's more of a report and update, I would like to bring back maybe, or have a discussion or a report in regards to the city's way of communicating via the website or communication that's been sent out to the community, I think. First and foremost, I think the city staff and the city's done a great job with updating the website and distributing information, but I would like to have a further discussion because there are some things that I think that we still need to work on or add when it comes to communicating to the community. For example, you know, during this ad hoc, homeless ad hoc committee, some of the things that we talked about were regarding many of the agencies that worked with the city that we as council members of the community are unaware of the things that they're doing. I think it's a good way for us to work together and say, how do we better send this message out to the community and say, these are the things that we're doing as a city, as a, and, you know, distributing information. So maybe that's, you know, an offline report or something in regards to where we can give feedback on how the city's doing in regards to distributing information to the community. That would be the first item that I, I don't know, we want to have a discussion on that?
Well, may I, may I make a suggestion? I would like to suggest that you, because I too have been trying to work with how we're pushing information out on the city, the things that we're doing, these are not matters of opinion, just to let the public know what the city is actually doing in certain things. Would you mind if you and I have that discussion offline and see where we go from there before? I don't think it needs to be something that comes before the council, we're just trying to be better about pushing information out about what we are actually doing, if that's okay?
Yeah, no, that's, that's, I'm perfectly fine with that, yeah, that's.
Okay. And you said there was.
Yeah, and then the second item, yeah, the second item, over the years, I've had this discussion with some former council members, but over the years, I've had several opportunities to speak to the LGBTQ community and present at their safe space meetings. And, you know, a while back ago, I brought this up, but I would like to bring forward a resolution encouraging the annual celebration of the month of June as Gay, Lesbian, Biased, Sexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month. And so I would like to bring forward a resolution, and that would include, obviously, displaying the pride flag at City Hall and other areas within the, within the city. So I would like to bring back a resolution and hopefully that we can support that. And I know it's, it's June, but it's right around the corner, so I would hope, I would hope it's something that I can bring back to the council.
Okay, everybody, do you want to? Does anybody have an objection to that, maybe it's the easiest way to do it?
No objection.
Objection to having June be the, be designated as a month that we put up the flag?
Yeah.
No objection.
I support that.
Okay, I do too.
Okay, well, we're talking about whether to agendize this, right?
Does it need to be, okay.
Oh, yeah, certainly, no, it certainly has to be agendized. And in some communities, it has engendered a lot of discussion over the years, so.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, so then, I guess I need to, I need everybody to do a thumbs up if you want to agendize it. So. All right, I'm seeing everybody's thumbs up, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, nobody has thumbs down, okay, very good. Thank you, councilmember, now I also saw a hand by councilmember Marks.
Yes, I would like to put on a future agenda for the proposal for an ad hoc gourmet alley committee with the city staff, council members, business owners, and the GDBA at the table.
Okay, and that's to help support the GDBA's efforts to improve downtown?
Correct, correct, and the streamlining of gourmet alley.
Right, okay, does anyone object to that? Okay, I, I'm taking it to be unanimous that that's going to be a future agenda item as well. Okay, unanimously passed, all right, thank you. Okay, moving on then, consent calendar. Suzanne, are there any public comments on the consent calendar first? Council, if you ever want to pull something off, please say so, otherwise I'm going to assume consent calendar is fine and go straight into public comment.
If you'd like to speak on the consent calendar, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comment.
All right, then do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, that was councilmember La Romanos, seconded by councilmember Tovar to approve the consent calendar. I know there should be roll call, I don't see it on my, yeah, there it is, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Armendariz.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Pedro La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes. Okay, that brings us to item seven, bids and proposals, we have none. Item eight, public hearings, we have none. Item nine, unfinished business. Adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy. Amending Chapter 19 of the Gilroy City Code entitled Smoking Prohibited, modifying Sections 19B-29 pertaining to parks. Introduced February 22nd, 2021 with a 6-0-1 absent vote. Councilmember Tovar being absent, and staff report, Adam Henig.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Adam Henig, Recreation Manager for the city of Gilroy, obviously, and staff liaison to the Parks and Recreation Commission. As I reported on February 22nd, the Santa Clara County Public Health Department has encouraged cities in the county to adopt more aggressive policies to deter residents from using any form of tobacco, which includes smoking, chewing, and vaping. This summer, the Public Health Department released its findings from the Tobacco-Free Communities Report and shared it with the Parks and Recreation Commission. The report showed that among the 15 cities within the county, there are still three that currently allow tobacco usage in parks, Gilroy among them. This past fall, the Parks and Recreation Commission recommended to city council an ordinance change of the municipal code that would ban designated smoking areas at all city parks. At the January 25th meeting, city council voted unanimously to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending Chapter 19B Smoking Pollution Control to prohibit smoking areas in city parks. At the February 22nd meeting, council approved the proposed ordinance. Tonight, you are being asked to adopt it. So here is the current code, and here is the approved replacement. If adopted, this ordinance shall be in full force and in effect 30 days from and after the date it is adopted, which would be today. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Adam. Council, are there any questions of Adam before I go to public comment? All right, seeing none, right, okay, Suzanne, are there any comments from the public on this item?
If you would like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comment.
Okay, then with that, I'll ask for a motion and a second.
So moved for approval.
All right.
Second.
That was councilmember La Romanos, seconded by councilmember Tovar to approve the, I think this is an ordinance, so Suzanne, you're going to read this, right? Okay, go ahead.
This is ordinance 2021-01, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy amending Gilroy City Code Chapter 19 to add modify Sections 19B.29 pertaining to smoking in parks. Rebecca Armendariz.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Pedro La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes. All right, item 10, introduction of new business. Such fun, acceptance of the fiscal year 2020 audit and comprehensive annual financial report and appropriations limit for the reporting period of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. Jimmy, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Are you able to see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. Today is the report on the results of the city's financial audit, which we are required by law to conduct annually, and thus the presentation of a comprehensive annual financial report. There's, there's really two components for you to receive tonight. The first is the citywide financial audit, which, you know, is the comprehensive annual financial report. I do remind people at times that the city of Gilroy is a $350 million corporation that provides services to the community, but at the end of the day, the, the business world looks at us as a very large corporation with a lot of assets and revenues and expenditures. The second report is the GAN report, and I'll talk to you about that in just a second. And then the federal single audit usually comes a couple of months after these two reports, and that's for communities that spend federal grants, federal monies, they have to have a federal single audit report as well. The auditors rendered an unmodified clean opinion, which means there is a reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatements and that the city maintains adequate internal controls to protect from loss, theft, or misuse. The other way I like to characterize it is that we have a culture of compliance and that the auditors felt that we reflected that in our financial statements and financial transactions. Um, the financial status actually verifies uh to some extent what we've been presenting to council, because what we present to you usually is estimated numbers and um, you know, assumptions, and then there comes a point where we have to merge that with our actual financial statement. And uh, to very close, uh, were those able to merge? It's no surprise that our governmental funds, a net position decreased from the prior year uh by seven point six million dollars primarily due to operational impacts from COVID nineteen, uh reduced revenues uh being the primary reason, and then the general fund lost almost five hundred mil, or I'm sorry, five million dollars last year, uh again, due to COVID nineteen. Uh, the real number here is the general fund reserve uh right now is at fourteen point nine million, which is very close to what we reported to council uh just a month ago. Uh, but it was at twenty seven point eight million as of July first, twenty nineteen. Uh, that's a combination, that reduction is a combination of two things, uh using, using of reserves for the economic uncertainty and then second, one-time purchases that were made by the city uh uh over the past year. It's not that uncommon for the city to do that for that purpose.
Can you bring up the slides so we can see them?
Oh, you can't see the slides?
Um, just the.
You can just run the show.
Yeah. They're not advancing, Jimmy.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry about that. Okay, can you see the financial status slide now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so I'll give you just a second, but again, uh general fund reserve is at fourteen point nine million, uh just a little bit above our, our, our twenty percent. I think it's about twenty five percent uh as of July first, uh twenty twenty. Uh, the other thing that council has to prove is the GAN limit, and this was established in, I think, nineteen seventy nine to have a measurement of how much the city is allowed to spend based on how much it takes in in tax revenue. Um, it is a, uh, for lack of a better word, a useless measurement. Uh, for example, the GAN limit for the city of Gilroy is a hundred and ninety million, and the city's tax-based expenditures is forty two million. So by this measure, we have a hundred and forty eight million dollars more we could spend of tax money, uh which is really financially nonsensical. Um, when it was created in seventy nine, it was uh based on different factors and uh different ways that government ran and just, nobody has repealed it. So we are required by law to, to um, to, you know, prepare it for council, but um it is an irrelevant measure of our fiscal health. Okay, the conclusion is, is that the city is compliant in accordance with general accepting accounting principles. Uh, we have a culture of compliance and to show you that uh we have not only gotten a clean letter from our auditors, we have won the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association Award for Financial Reporting for the last five years, and we'll be submitting another um, another version for uh GFOA's consideration. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I do want to thank uh interim city uh finance director, uh Cindy Murphy and finance manager Rosemary Guerrero and the rest of the finance team who do this job that takes, as soon as the city uh gets ready to close a fiscal year, they spend the next six months uh showing the auditors that uh, you know, we did present things in a factual and truthful manner. So kudos to them for getting this done. It was the first year with this auditor too, uh which always makes things a little hard as you get to know each other a little bit, but um they did a great job and uh very proud of that department. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jimmy. All right, do any council members have questions on the audited report?
Yes, Miss Mayor.
All right.
Or, or Madam Mayor, I'm never sure what the correct honorific title is for you. Uh, but, but Jimmy, a, a while back, we were talking about uh possibly refinancing something with regard to our pension obligations and that refinancing obviously has to do with uh, you know, credit ratings and things like this. Did the audit go into that at all, or was it just simply looking at how we operate fiscally? Did, I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand if the credit rating was something that was looked at during this audit.
Uh, no, the fiscal, uh, the audit report that you have here is just an opinion on whether or not our transactions are recorded accurately and up to standards. Uh, the credit rating process completely independent, but some of the factors that are gone going into the credit reporting is the CAFR, is the audit finding. So they're all kind of loosely interchanged uh to build that credit rating and get an overall picture of our fiscal health and, and performance.
So this is more procedural than the actual kind of content, if you will?
Yes, and actually the city has, can, cannot change a single thing in this report. This is an independent audit. We present it to you as a council, but it, it, it's somebody else's opinion which we are required to have.
Well, it seems like it was a good opinion, so thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, it's, it's a stor, audits are considered historical. They're as of a particular date and they're just looking at the numbers as of that date, and they are just there to provide a level of assurance. In the case of an audit, it's the highest level of assurance that there's not a material misstatement in the financial statements, and it goes into evaluating internal controls as well to understand the likelihood of whether or not things could happen. So um, it's, it is a clean report. It's what Gilroy's always had. I would certainly uh like my copy of that report when uh, when it's available. I've been keeping them. All right, thank you. Are there, Suzanne, do we have any public comments on this?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand. It appears we do not have any public comment.
Okay, then with that, I am looking for a motion apparently to accept this report. I need a motion and a second.
I'll move acceptance of the audit report.
All right, is there a second? Nobody wants to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, Peter La Romanios made the motion, council member Bracco seconded uh to accept, this is acceptance of the fiscal year twenty twenty audit and comprehensive annual financial report and appropriations limit for the reporting period of July first, twenty nineteen to June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Roll call.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romanios.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar. Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes. Thank you. All right, item B. Consent to the appointment of Harjo Sanga, I hope I'm saying his last name right, Sanga as finance director. Leanne McPhillis with our staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and Gilroy community. I'm pleased to present this report to you tonight, uh adding a member to our senior executive team. In November of twenty twenty, the city commenced a recruitment to fill the vacant position of finance director following the appointment of the former director Jimmy Forbes to our city administrator position. So we needed to find a new finance director as a result of that job change for uh Mr. Forbes. Following the recruitment and interview process, we identified a qualified and experienced candidate and we conducted uh several interviews with subject matter experts, department directors and the city administrator uh to identify the top finalists for the position Harjo Sangha. Mr. Sangha completed a thorough background check and at this time, city administrator Forbes is recommending that he be appointed as Gilroy's next finance director. Uh, we've identified him as a strong fit for this position. He brings over eight years of public sector finance experience to Gilroy, having served in a variety of finance and accounting positions for the city of Morgan Hill. His current position in Morgan Hill is assistant to the city manager. Uh, this is a job with significant responsibilities involving city finances and key services, and prior to that, he served as the accounting manager, having advanced to that position within the department. In addition, Mr. Sangha is a certified government finance manager, a CGFM, and is an active member of the Association of Government Accountants, the Government Financers, Finance Officers Association and the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. Um, and all of those professional development organizations have built up his skills and experience uh which will be coming to the city of Gilroy. Mr. Sangha also brings some key leadership and management traits that the city sought in a new director. Strong technical and leadership skills, an excellent customer service orientation, the ability to establish and maintain partnerships, the ability to develop and lead teams, creative problem solving, ability to think outside the box and implement innovative ways of doing business, and most importantly, communicating complex information to others in an easy to understand format. Uh, finance directors that have that talent are, are hard to find. Um, Mr. Sangha is excited to join the Gilroy team and put his talents to work. We have some financial challenges, but he is ready to roll up his sleeves and uh join our team. Mr. Sangha holds a bachelor's degree from San Francisco State University in Business Administration with a concentration in accounting, and he is current, currently pursuing his master's degree in public administration from Golden Gate University. Upon consent of the council and our issuance of a final offer letter, Mr. Sangha would begin, begin employment with us on April first, twenty twenty one. So at this time, we are asking for council to consent the city administrator's recommendation to appoint Harjo Sangha to the position of finance director with the city of Gilroy. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Leanne. All right, does anyone have any questions of Leanne before I go to public comment? Seeing none, Suzanne, do we have any public comments?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine now on your phone or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comment.
All right, then, a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, council member Bracco made the motion, council member La Romanio seconded to consent to the city administrator's recommendation to appoint Harjo Sangha to department head position of finance director. Roll call.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romanios.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes. All right, that passes unanimously. Item eleven, city administrators' reports, uh standing report. Yeah, standing report on the operational impacts and city community efforts related to COVID nineteen pandemic. Chief Wyatt.
Actually, Madam Mayor, I want to give a real quick introduction.
Oh, you do?
Uh, that, I know I, I put Chief Wyatt on there. I just have two things I, I want to uh, to discuss is that um, the uh, the next CARES Act or stimulus package uh that we talked about in previous council meetings, uh one point nine trillion dollars with many of those funds going to local entities uh passed the House uh Saturday, and it is now on its way to the Senate, and it is expected that it will be uh either uh rejected or passed within the next two weeks. Uh, primarily because, primarily because many of the programs that are currently available, including unemployment benefits are set to expire, so there is a sense of urgency at the congressional level uh to get that bill done. So uh, we'll certainly keep you posted. As we've talked about, that would be about ten million dollars to the city of Gilroy, which uh we could certainly use. Uh, the second thing, uh before we go to Chief uh Wyatt and to talk to you about the uh, the pandemic is that today's Chief Wyatt's birthday, so uh wanted to wish him a happy birthday and thanks for spending uh your, your special day with us at the council meeting. Thanks, Chief.
Happy birthday, Chief.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, so if I may, I'm, I want to focus on the um, the, some of the things that you said uh, Madam Mayor, about the vaccine itself and um, some of the things that uh are actually coming down the pike, which are really, really good news for us. Just like you said, we're, we're uh, our vaccine is in shorter supply, particularly this week. And so although we're still going to be giving the, the vaccine at the different sites, it's going to be somewhat limited to just those that have already signed up. Uh, uh, the walk-ins that we've uh anticipated uh vaccinating, uh, the, there probably won't be enough of the vaccine available for the walk-ins. But be that as it may, uh, I think everyone has heard about Johnson and Johnson just recently getting the uh FDA approval uh for uh, for uh, district, distribution to the, of the vaccine to uh the general public. What's good about that is that uh, the state of California is um probably going to receive about three hundred and eighty thousand doses this week. I don't know if it's going to be at the beginning of the week or if it's going to be towards the end, but certainly Santa Clara County will, will receive a, a share of that. And with that, uh, it's, it's going to be a single dose um variety. In other words, instead of the Pfizer and the Moderna, where you have to get uh, uh two doses, uh practically three weeks to four weeks apart, with the Johnson and Johnson, it's just a single dose. It is highly effective. Uh, it, it has a uh efficacy rate of about sixty six percent, and that's taken into account uh its success against uh a couple of the variants down in uh, uh, let, uh, down in South America and in uh South Africa. So um, all of that is really good news for us in that now we have three choices. And so um, with that, you'll probably see a uh, a dramatic increase in the availability of, of uh, of the vaccine within the next uh coming weeks. Along with that, of course, uh, the tier um has been lowered and uh, uh, as stated before, and um, I strongly encourage people to uh, to, to really consider getting the vaccine. I, I read a, a, a recent study that said that um, probably about half the population are, are committed to getting it, but that means the other half are not. And I will have to say that uh, having looked at the um, the safety of all three vaccines and the fact that over uh half a million people have received the full vaccination with um, with the uh Moderna and the Pfizer, uh, the uh number of allergic reactions are actually significantly low still. And uh, it is, uh, when you compare the fact that the virus itself is extremely dangerous for people over the age of fifty, um, approximately ninety percent of the fatalities are, are in that uh age group fifty and above. Um, it's a true game changer and uh we're at, uh, we just passed five hundred thousand deaths, and in the state of California, we just passed fifty one thousand. If we consider that uh the Vietnam War uh in ten years running killed fifty thousand, uh, the, the virus has certainly taken its toll on all Americans, but certainly Californians as well. So uh, with that, I'll just say that um, uh, uh, getting the vaccine, uh, no matter what your age group is, uh whether you're uh in your twenties or in your fifties or in your eighties, is going to um, uh, help us through achieving herd immunity and put us back uh on our feet again, uh putting our kids back in schools and uh putting people back to work and uh keeping us out of the hospital. I think that uh, all of these things are, are super important um to see light at the end of the tunnel, and we're, we're actually seeing that. And as firefighters, I, I can tell you that uh, in handling the um, uh, the whole COVID uh pandemic, it's been very taxing and it's uh very heart wrenching to see uh people that normally would be healthy uh end up going to the hospital with severe um, uh lung, lung problems or uh other associated problems because of COVID. So uh, so with that, I'll just say that um, uh, Gilroy continues to um, to uh, provide the vaccine uh where available. It uh certainly the uh Gilroy High School is going to be our mass vaccination unit. We're, we're going to partner with the uh county health on that one, and we've already been count, um, helping them out with their uh mobile vaccination units uh over the past several weeks. Uh, I think we've vaccinated over five hundred people. And so uh, we're making a dent and uh we look forward to um, uh, furthering that, that uh stoppage of the uh, of the virus. And I'll, I'll uh stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Council, do, does anyone have a question of the chief?
Chief, will the mobile units?
Uh, continue.
My Barmodaris.
Are we raising hands or raising? No, I just didn't know that anybody wanted to speak, so please.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to ask the chief um, if the mobile units are going out still to the different um senior centers and senior living facilities?
Uh, absolutely, and in fact, um, uh, this coming Wednesday, we're planning on being at the uh senior center yet again. Um, and uh, I'm still uh partnering with uh county health on, on uh providing uh mobile vaccination uh units uh in the future. Uh, I think that the stoppage of the uh, of the vaccine, or should say a shortage of the vaccine has um slowed things a bit, but we're going to, we're, we've uh, we've planned on picking up this week where we left off last week with anticipation of uh going out to different sites.
Thank you, Chief, and, and thank you and your staff. Um, I commend you all for solid work and um just the really positive and easygoing way that your, your staff has with folks who are really nervous about getting the vaccine. You, they see our, our local firefighters out there and they, they just get a little bit more relaxed and, you know, and they joke around with them, so, so thank you for that.
No, thank you. We, we uh, we consider it an honor.
Thank you. Any other council member questions before I go to the public?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Yeah, I just want to echo what Councilmember Armandars just mentioned. My dad being one of those individuals where, you know, his whole life, he's always been not afraid to order the doctor or get, you know, get checked out. It's just sort of how he is, you know, and for him to go on his own out there was, was great to hear, you know. I commend you all for all the work that you, you guys are doing. In regards to the demographic groups or populations that are, that you're witnessing getting the vaccination, is there one group that you see more of, or is it, is it a diverse group of individuals? I just worry maybe some groups are, like, my colleague just mentioned, maybe still afraid or unsure about getting the vaccination. Are you seeing a large scope of diverse individuals out there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that anecdotally, yes, we are, but I would have to say also that particularly the Latinx community has, has been the, probably the greatest fear, if you will, and, or at least some anxiety about getting the vaccine. And I'll just say that with that, I think with our persistence in, in our messaging and making sure that the community is reached out to, I think we can overcome that. I think there, like I said also before, that in general, the population, only about half of them want to get it. I, I think that the, the common thing, theme I keep hearing is they want to wait and see if the vaccine is safe. And I'll have to say that waiting to get this disease and I'm, and I'll, I'll, it is nothing like the flu, and particularly the older you get. And even if we, we get past the, the, the death rate, which is quite high for older Americans, I also find that just, my daughter's a nurse, and she deals with all sorts of patients in the ICU, and she's said the same thing to me. She's never seen a twenty-year-old get a stroke from the flu, but she has seen twenty-year-olds get strokes from COVID. And that's the hidden population or the hidden toll, if you will, from the, from the, the virus itself is that it does affect some people in a very disastrous way. And it causes clotting in the brain, causes clotting in the heart, and causes clotting down in the extremities, arms and legs to where some people have to get surgery or get amputations. So this is not a disease that, that anyone should take lightly, and I would say that with the safety record of all three so far, and certainly the fact that it's doing its job in preventing death. In fact, every one of the, the vaccines will one hundred percent prevent, prevent death. And I don't know of any vaccine that can, can make that sort of claim. So that's a, that's a huge thing in, in everyone's favor.
Yeah. Well, no, again, thank you. Yeah, I was, you know, when I asked that question, I sort of knew the answer already, but I wanted to sort of bring it to light, and I'm glad, you know, you know, you being in your position, you're able to share that, I think. I, I asked the city to continue doing what we're doing in regards to promoting and, you know, on social media, on our websites, and encouraging folks to go out there and get this done. And I also, I know several, many of the council members are also doing the same, but I would continue to encourage them also to reach out to their group of social media friends and encourage their neighbors and their friends, because you're right. I mean, there are still groups of individuals who, no matter what you tell them, they still won't go out and get that done, you know, and it's important for us to continue to educate and encourage folks to get out there. So like I said, if my dad did do it, believe me, anybody can do it, you know. So again, I just want to commend you all again for the great work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, I'm going to go to the public before I have council members a second time. Suzanne, can you let me know if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak or have a question?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand. It appears we have no public comment.
Okay, then there's another question from Councilmember Armandars.
Thank you, Mayor. It was more of a, a comment, just because I have a group of volunteers who's calling folks and to help them schedule their appointments, and it was, it's so hard to get through, like, like the chief was saying. And we're calling Latinos over sixty-five, and they, as vulnerable as they are and as terrible as the death rate has been amongst them, you know, them being the most vulnerable, they still are resistant to, to it. And so we're looking for credible messengers, people in the community who they know and trust, like Father Rubio over at Saint Mary's Church to, to spread the message, right? And let them, he videotaped himself getting, getting vaccinated. So we're going to be sharing that out so that folks will have some trust and see that people that they know and trust have survived it and didn't turn into zombies, you know, or, you know, anything like that. So, so if we could all help push out those messages, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
All right, any other council members with questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. That was just for Steve's report. So next is city attorneys' reports.
No report at this time.
All right. Really, guys? We are about to adjourn? We're about to adjourn. All right, thank you all. We'll see you in two weeks. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you all.
Bye-bye.
Bye, all.